Okay. Hello. Welcome to the January 21st, 2016 zoning board of appeals. We have had previously had five applications on tonight for those of you that are watching at home might be interested in any of them. The Four Grasshopper Lane will be making a motion to, they've asked to have that heard in February. Parcel at 169 Jericho Road is asked to be heard in March. And the application for 134 Hammer Rock Beach Road has withdrawn. They do have an application in front of the planning board. And I do not know the status of that, but if you're interested in that application, you should check with the planning board. We welcome Annie back tonight. She's just had surgery on her foot. So, hope all is well. And your fingers work, correct? All right, we're in good shape. Annie, do you want to read the first application?
Do you want me to read the applications that were, that are being continued, or should we just start with?
Fifty-four Dreamwall, they're on the list.
She's not mic'd.
What's been continued?
She's not mic'd though.
Are you not mic'd? What are you asking about? You said, "No, wait a minute," because she's asking about something that's been continued. What is that?
The three you just mentioned.
Oh, 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 yes, yes.
Do we want to do those first?
We probably should do those first, yeah. All right, all right. Well, since you're not mic'd, I'll read those then. The application for Jonathan Appria of 23 Shipyard Drive in Hingham requests an MGL Chapter 40A Section 6 finding slash special permit on behalf of John M. Creedon to raise a single-story non-conforming garage and construct a two-story garage in a larger footprint, keeping the same non-conforming setbacks. The property is located at Four Grasshopper Lane, Situate. It's on Assessor's Map 7, Block 7, Parcel 2. And they have requested a continuance to February, what's our February meeting date?
I got it right here.
You don't know? Just John, John will pull up his calendar real quick.
Eighteenth.
February 18th. Okay, so do we have a motion?
Move to continue. Four Grasshopper Lane, application to February 18th.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so that is continued to February 18th. Next application to be continued is David Camo of 6619 South Dixie Highway, Unit 376, Miami, Florida, requesting a floodplain special permit under Section 470.6F and a finding slash special permit or variance under MGL Chapter 40A Section 6 and 10 to raise and reconstruct a non-conforming, single-family dwelling, adding more than 20% to the existing gross floor plan located at 169 Jericho Road, Situate, Mass., Assessor's Map 46, Block 14, Parcel 10. They have requested a continuance to the March?
Seventeenth.
March 17th?
St. Patrick's Day.
Okay, we'll be here. Requested continuance to March 17th. Do we have a motion?
To continue to, was it March 17th? March 17th.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Fifth application, Peter B. Princey of 51 Turnaway, Norwell, requests a special permit slash finding under MGL Chapter 40A Section 6 to raise a non-conforming, single-story garage and construct a two-story guest house in the same non-conforming footprint at 134 Hammer Rock Beach Road, Situate, Mass., Assessor's Map 71, Block 5, Parcel 11. They have asked to withdraw their application. So, we have a motion?
To permit the withdrawal of the 134 Hammer Rock Beach Road application.
Did we receive a letter?
Yeah, there is letters in the file.
Do we have a letter requesting withdrawal?
Yes.
In the file. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. That brings us back around to the first application, which is Richard Spence of 71 Williamsburg Drive, Situate, Mass., requesting an MGL Chapter 40A Section 6 finding slash special permit to add more than 20% to the pre-existing, non-conforming dwelling located at 54 Dreamwall Road, Situate, Mass., Assessor's Map 33, Block 3, Parcel 12.
Just a form update, we just received an updated set of plans for updated.
Today?
Yes, January 21st, replacing the November 25th, 2015 plan.
Okay. And I see they have made a significant increase in the size of what they're going to do, correct?
The garage size increased and the percentage increased, yes.
Okay. All right, great. Why don't you introduce yourself?
But we would like to make a disclosure and probably withdraw from the hearing because we have plenty of people here to hear it, but the neighbor to the subtly boundary is my brother and sister-in-law.
Okay.
And I have no interest in the property or do not benefit, but probably it's cleaner if I don't.
I agree. So, that's fine. I don't think we have to vote on that. No?
I was going to say I'm not going to vote.
No, okay. Well, actually, I think if you're withdrawing, you have to actually leave the bench, as they say.
Can I just go home now?
No. We might need you. We might need you. You don't get to miss another, no, no missing any more meetings.
I'd bring your coat with you, just in case.
We're holding it hostage.
And I'll put it off on the back.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Morris?
Yep, for the record, Gregory Morse, Registered Engineer, Morse Engineering, representing the property owner, Richard Spence. This is a special permit finding in accordance with Section 8, 10.2 of your bylaw, a Section 6 finding to allow, in addition to an existing, non-conforming structure and lot. The property is located at 54 Dreamwall Road. The house was constructed in 1931, per the Assessor's records. The lot is non-conforming with respect to lot area and lot width. The lot area is 19,406 square feet. This is in the R2 zoning district. Lot width is measured at 115 feet through the dwelling. What we're proposing is, we're proposing a new addition off the back of the building. The new addition is 12 feet by 16 feet in width. We're also proposing a new garage on the left-hand side above that garage would be finished space as well. It would be a two-story addition. The dimensions that are proposed comply with the side yard setback. We're proposing the setback at 16 feet, the rear yard at 82.8, and the front, there's no, there's no change at 48.1 feet. Overall, the existing dwelling right now is 1,533 square feet of floor space with the proposed addition in second floor area. The proposed floor area is 2,762 square feet. This represents an 80.2% increase in the floor area. We feel the board can issue the special permit because it complies with all respects to the front, side, and rear setbacks. We don't think it'll be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood of building of this size. It's an allowed use in the district. I turn it over to you.
Okay. Juan, wondered if your client brought the deed over?
Michael Paxton, Billy, you're on.
Okay. Did you get the deed? Okay, good, good. And which really, truly, absolutely owns it? Okay, good. It's easier to say Spence than the name of the prior owner. I can't figure that out, so. Well, what I, one question I had was on your, on your prior map, and I think you've kind of corrected it, so this little corner's being removed.
Correct. That's coming off the back.
Okay. I didn't really see anything I had any questions on.
Are you adding another bulkhead somewhere else with the one you're eliminating? Or, I think the addition covers that.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, there'll probably be a bulkhead off the.
So that might be located where the other porch was?
I was, I'm open to either off the back of the addition or on the left side of the 12 by 16 behind the garage.
Yep, into your new foundation?
Yes.
And then?
Oh, I'll tell you.
Tal Sura, or are you a septic?
New septic.
New septic?
Correct.
Okay, and that located in the rear?
Yeah, it's located in the rear. That's been submitted to the Board of Health.
All right, so your setbacks would.
Comply.
Comply with it, okay.
Yes.
That was it?
Right?
No question.
Is there anybody in the audience wishes to be heard on this application?
I happen to be the, my name is Edith Tibbets. I live to the right of the existing dwelling. I'm thrilled, the house has been empty, closed two years and in disrepair for the last 30 years, so I'm thrilled somebody's coming in to take care of it.
I'm sure it'll be, it looks like a nice little house. I don't know how little it is, but.
It's not nice now.
Oh, it's not nice?
No.
It will be. I can pretty, pretty, almost guarantee that, so that'll be good. Okay. Bob, do you have any comments, questions, concerns?
No, not really at all. The non-conformities seem to be minimal, and certainly I think this would be an improvement overall for the property and neighborhood.
Okay. All right. Anyone have a motion they'd like to make?
Sure, I think it's the gale situation, actually. So, on the application, on the application for a special permit on 54 Dreamwall Road, I move that the board find that the existing property is non-conforming with respect to lot width and lot area, that the proposed addition to the existing home will not increase any non-conformity nor will intensify any existing non-conformity, and that therefore the applicant be granted a special permit.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Congratulations. You can rip that out. Who gets that one?
That was the old one.
I have notes on the old ones. What?
The three of us, it can't be Anthony.
It can't be Anthony. All right, Sarah's got it. Should be reasonably to do. Okay. That is back. The fourth application is I.M. Culinary Consulting Corp. of 555 Canal Street Penthouse, Manchester, New Hampshire, 03101, requesting a MGL Chapter 40A Section 6 finding slash special permit to construct a covered entry on front of his non-conforming dwelling 15.8 feet from Summit Ave, property located at 10 Summit Ave, Situate, Mass., Assessor's Map 13, Block 2, Parcel 27. Hi.
Good evening. My name is Jack Riordan, and I am here to represent the owner. I have been hired to do the contracting work. My company is a home building operation based in Kingston, and we've been hired to renovate the property, which was bought by Erwin Muscat of New Hampshire. I.M. Culinary Consulting Corp., and we are improving the residence, and they have plans to sell it.
Okay.
So, a part of our renovations involves curb appeal and doing things such as changing the window and door schedule on the front, changing the siding from old shingles to clapboards, no paint throughout, new trim work and things of that nature. The existing front steps are, are just a set of pressure-treated stringers. There's no landing in a, you know, dual handrails. We have plans to build a porch, a pressure-treated porch, improve with composite decking and PVC, you know, white vinyl rails. What we would, what we, the reason why I'm here is, we would also like to incorporate roof portico with columns over that deck, and.
Just to be clear, the roof portico, would that be open?
Open. Yes. They have a sketch, if you want to take a peek.
I think that's good. You know, I don't have in my packet, do we have a, do we have the Assessor's map? And I don't know if I just missed, nobody else has it? Yeah, a deed, Assessor's map. We need a lot, we need, we need something that says you're authorized to be here.
Yes, I had a, a part of the application, there was a letter. I think you had a, a part of the application stated that if you were not the owner, you had to have authorization.
Right.
To represent the owner. I did supply a signed document to that.
All right, we just didn't get it.
Yeah, we've got a quick claim deed.
Annie, Annie, Annie. Having your foot operated on is just really put a kink in this. Don't worry about it. We got it here?
That would fall into the category of valid excuse for.
That's it, I think so too. Okay, good. So we've got a, we've got a quick claim deed, Matthews to I.M. Culinary. We have that. We have a little plan of lots. And we have Mr. Muscat, mind if I, Mr. to, the owner of, as owner of the property, upon this letter should be my authorization to the following people who may act. Mr. Riordan, what, they, I hate to, oh, oh, your name is here, I'm sorry. I'm reading too fast and not seeing it. Kathy LeBrack of Keller Realty, John D. or John M. Riordan of New Homes Inc., and Kevin Grady of Grady Consulting. So, we're good on that. Now let's see if we have the, is the?
Assessor's map.
Assessor's map card there?
That's the, that's the original application.
What? It's not? Okay. Well, we'll, we'll move forward and talk about it, but at some point, we'll probably, you know, we may need the Assessor's card on this one.
Do you have that, that sketch of?
Yes.
I guess what, maybe Bob could help us on this. It sounds like it's not an enclosed roof.
Yeah.
So it would be a deck.
It's just, no, it's just a pitched.
Portico, so it would be open?
Yeah.
That makes a whole lot better.
That would be considered a deck then?
That's the front elevations, it's left and right.
All right, so it's, whether it's covered or not?
Whether, when it's covered, it becomes not a deck and not steps.
But they're asking it to be covered.
Right.
When he said open, he means no walls.
Okay, that's what I was trying to get to, to make that clear.
You're looking to put a small roof for, to make it, you know, drip edge and curb appeal.
Right, a covered, a covered roof if you're standing on the landing, waiting to go into the front door.
But not, not enclosed on the walls.
Right, not enclosed.
But it would be within your, within a future owner's purview to enclose the walls under the drip edge of the, of the roof. So, that's why we look at it as being an extension of the, of the house.
If, sorry, if this were granted, a special permit.
Okay.
It's pretty, it's a pretty small room.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know. Now, I noticed on your, on the map, the Grady Consulting showed the setbacks.
Yes.
On the, across the street. Do you know why he did that for you?
Yes, well, it was apparent if, in driving up and down the street, that the houses were all relatively close to the street, I think, similar to ours, certainly within the 30-foot zoning setback. This is R2 zone. So, he felt that it would be indicative of us being almost in conformity, not to use a legal term, but similar to neighbors, not different from neighbors by virtue of making this change. So, I think a part, a part of the, the argument on our behalf would be that we would be doing something that would be in keeping with the neighborhood, both architecturally and with respect to proximity of the building and or this portico to the street layout. Because we would not be closer than those neighbors that are directly across the street. We would still be even farther away from the street layout, albeit inches, but not closer, I guess is the point.
Are you familiar with any of the Situate zoning bylaws?
I did read them. I'm, I may have a father who's a lawyer and a son in law school, but I'm not going to pretend to be a lawyer.
Okay.
But I did peruse them, and certainly I, I think I have an understanding.
Okay, well, there's, there is, the bylaw says that you have to be, the front setback has to be 30 feet, okay? But there is an exception, and the exception says that it's under 620.4, and it says that no building need to be set back on its lot further from the line of a street or way than the average distance from such line of the buildings on the same side thereof between two intersecting streets and ways and within 200 feet of the lot in question. Okay? I drove down there today to kind of take a look at your neighborhood, and first of all, I think that's, that neighborhood is just a hidden gem in Situate. It's a beautiful little neighborhood. And I did notice that, you know, that your neighbors, two directly across from you and right to your left, I guess it would be, do have some porticos farther down the street and the one way at the corner doesn't have. I don't know how or when these other ones were built, so I don't know by what authority, if any, they, they have their little porticos. One of the problems is, we cannot use the setbacks on the opposite side of the street to give you relief here. We could look at the setbacks on your side of the street, but it did not, it seemed to me that, as, as I remember, yours was probably the closest one?
I would tend to agree, at least visually.
Yeah. So, well, and you know, visually sometimes can be funny, because sometimes the street layout actually goes further into the yard than you might think. And so I certainly would never represent where, you know, where any of them fit, but as I see this, gentlemen of the, of the board here, is that we're into a variance situation. Well, this is, I, I mean, I know you're going to say, is this gale? Okay, right? Is that your?
It's an extension of the existing non-conformity.
I don't see that, because it's creating a, it's not an extension. It's not like he's saying, I want to, we want to build off the side and go straight, and we want to add, you know, six feet on, on, you know, to the left of the building or whatever. This is creating a brand-new non-conformity in the setback, and we.
It's increasing the existing non-conformity. The existing non-conformity is less than 30 feet.
Is not in compliance with the setback, whether it's an inch or, or two feet.
I don't see it. People come before us all the time to add on to the front of their houses, and we've always said, if you're going into the front setback and you can't, I mean, I, I don't see it.
If it was 30, if it was.
A 30-foot, 1 feet.
And then, and then they said, we want to go five feet into that, so it's only 25 feet. That would be creating a new non-conformity, but that's not what we have here.
And, and we have, we have found this type of a application numerous times in the past.
Remind me of one, because I, I mean.
I've been doing this for 18 years, and I could go back and probably find.
Well, then, just I'm asking, you've done it, remind me of one.
I think we had one on Booth Hill Road, that was within a setback.
We had one down on Yoll, Yoll Ave area, or Ely, Ely.
I think we might have had one too, the, the one that was really close up to the road.
And we had one on.
We didn't let them go deeper into, closer to the roof.
I think, I think it was only half a foot or something, but it was.
And I think the challenge, the, the bylaw doesn't allow the relief by right, but I can understand the applicant's interest in, in showing us that the style and tenor of the neighborhood, that this would not be an unusual increase in the non-conformity. Right now, you're, we're talking 19 and a half feet, and because of the small, the small roof structure, we're only talking four feet?
Three and a half.
Three and a half feet. And it, you know, you could argue it is, it's a safety issue because of, you know, ice and snow and on a step. There's all sorts of reasons that are justifiable to why it would, why an applicant would want it. It's already non-conforming in a significant way. It's over, it's over 10 feet into the setback. So, you know.
Which is, which is my hesitation.
But it's, but it's, it's very much consistent with the neighborhood.
Yes, well, I think analytically, the question under gale, because I think it is a gale question, is, first, we have to find that non-conforming it is. Second, we have to find whether it's increasing or intensifying. Here it clearly increasing the existing non-conformity. Okay, so the answers there are yes. Then, the next question is, is it more substantially detrimental to the neighborhood than what it is now? And that's why I think gale, I mean, Grady probably gave us these other setbacks to show that this is consistent with the neighborhood, that most of the neighborhood is, in fact, very close to the street.
Well, you can't say that. I mean, I've been down there. This, the other side of the street, those houses are, but on his side, nobody is.
They're back further.
They're back.
I think he considered that.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so it's a mixed bag in the neighborhood. It's 50/50. There's no question about it. Oh, thank you. Good, good, good.
Multitasking.
Could I have one?
Oh, did not see that. Bob, what's your take on this?
It's, it's a question, honestly, that I haven't personally dealt with, but I certainly take the point that it's an existing non-conformity that's being increased, and that's the criteria for a special permit. I honestly think it needs that criteria, criterion, excuse me. A zoning variance is for situations that are unique, I believe, and can only be branded under those conditions where it's going to cause the, the owner or proponent serious financial hardship or some other unique circumstance. I'm not sure that applies here.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's real clear, it doesn't. I don't have any problem with that. I, you know, I, I struggled, and I'd like to, you know, I'd like to be able to find the right, I'd like to be able to find in your favor, because I don't think it's a big, I think it's not a big deal, but. So, the, the issue is, if it was, if you guys, let me just see if you're, what you're saying is that if it was setback 30 feet right at the line, you would say going into the, that would create a new non-conformity?
They did a variance.
Okay.
That's the difference between increasing an existing non-conformity.
Right.
And I think also will.
It's intense, it's, it's certainly intensifying. We can agree with that.
It's increasing, actually.
Yeah, yeah.
If you were extending along the same setback, the width of the house, that would be intent, that would be intensifying, not increasing. The way I would actually.
So, yeah.
Because this is, this is going.
It's increasing the non-conformity.
You're actually increasing the non-conformity, but it already is a non-conformity.
And it's not like we're, it's not like he's adding a room or the significant size of it, which I think is, is even, even if it gets closed in at a later date, it still is not a.
And we could find that this is, in a different application, we could find that this was not allowed, inasmuch as if all of the other houses in the neighborhood were 30 foot, 30 or greater feet back. And this was the only one that was encroaching on the setback in the whole neighborhood.
Right.
In the general area. And it's an, an increase. We could find that that wasn't intensification, it was not consistent with the neighborhood and therefore detrimental to the neighborhood.
Actually detrimental, because it would change the character of the neighborhood. I agree with you.
But I have a hard time finding that in this situation, because the neighborhood's a mixed bag. They can't get the relief that would be allowed by the bylaw, because it's not a number of houses on the same side of the street.
Right.
But the evidence suggests that the opposite side of the street is completely consistent with what this house wants to do. And it's already, it's already almost the same setback as the. And it's already... It's already almost the same setback as the opposite side of the street.
And even the neighbor to his... To the right, you know, is nonconforming as well.
The Easterland neighbor is nonconforming. They're down to 25.4.
I'm not sure from this picture whether that's a covered or just a stoop, but...
It has a roof.
Yeah, it does.
Yeah, they all have roofs. It has a really fancy little roof.
Again, there is some consistency in the neighborhood regarding this type of structure.
Right.
I don't think it creates a slippery slope of, you know, the person wants to add a garage that's... They're 25 feet from the side... From the setback, and they want to add a garage that encroaches an additional 15 feet and leaves only 10 feet of parking between the layout of the house. I mean, that would be a whole different kind of an application. This would not create precedent to force that kind of a decision on our part.
Okay. Anybody in the audience have any questions? Nobody's here. Okay, Bob, you don't have anything else to add?
I don't.
Okay. Well, I think I could probably live with this one. I see... I see your analysis. I think if it was not... I guess the argument I'm trying to clarify is that if it was not already in the front setback, then you would say it was creating a new one, and that would require variance.
Right.
Okay. All right, I can live with that. Anybody else have any comments to add?
I think we're out of ideas, members.
Frank Gale. Motion?
Motion.
Want you to do it again?
Sure.
You're so good at it, Frank.
We're going to rename you Frank.
Go to Gale.
Frank Gale.
Okay, Gale, on the application for a special permit for 10 Summit Ave, I move that the board find that the existing property is nonconforming with respect to the front setback, that the proposed additional addition of a portico is set forth in the plan of Grady Consulting dated December 16, 2015, does increase the nonconformity as set forth in the plan, but the board finds that the increase is not more substantially detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure, and that therefore the board grant a special permit.
I would... Well, I would add that the... I would leave him a little leeway in that it can be no closer to the front lot line than 15.8 feet. You know, they may ultimately want to make it a little bit wider instead of just being a box on the front of the, you know...
Well, it says 4 by 4. Is there any plans to change that? I mean, I would say stick with the 4 by 4 and then come back because what they made is why is the whole front of the house. That might not be his...
Well, I guess just to answer the question, you know, is that to the roof line or is that to the...
What's going in front of the front?
... little eave overhang?
It would be three and a half feet, actually. He wrote 4 by 4, but it was...
Have you got enough room? Have you got enough room to open your storm door without hitting the columns?
Yeah, that's a three and a half feet to the...
Okay.
Okay.
Well, and I think to that point, what we've discovered that there are basically doghouse step enclosures in the street. We haven't discovered that there's a farmer's porch on the street.
Right, that's a different...
That would be... That could...
Different evaluation. I mean, I might go with the two, but...
Right, but I think what they're asking for is what they asked for.
Yeah, I agree.
All right, then it should be a 4 by 4 portico.
Not to exceed 4 by 4.
Not to exceed 4 by 4.
That's what the plan has set forth.
Set forth in the back. Okay, dated. Well, and you know what? I think for me, what we need to do is Mr. Grady has failed to do a couple of things. We don't know the setback on the sides. I would feel... I mean, I think that's, you know, for us to be able to fully state where the lot lines are, I think that's a pretty typical thing to add. If we could get that added... It's not a big deal for him to add that on to the plan, the side setbacks.
The side setback of the porch?
Of the... No, of the property.
But it may well be nonconforming, but it's not the nonconformity that they're asking us to consider.
I know, but I think we have to identify the property in all the ways it's nonconformity.
Yeah, I think that you're right. I think Gale does require us to identify all the nonconformities.
Yeah.
Does it require setback, maybe 15?
The side yard's 15. According to the side yard, it's 15, and the lot front is 100, so it's got the...
That's the required, but we don't know what the existing is. That's the problem.
On the application, side yards are indicated with plus or minus at 18 and 24 feet.
The front is indicated as 15.
Proposed. That's proposed.
No, I...
It's a bench rung area.
Am I looking on the same one? No, that's 54 Dream Walt. I don't have it here.
Here it is. But the same thing is there.
That's proposed.
But there aren't any work... There's any work being done, so the proposed is existing.
I get it. I just really... I think it's very sloppy engineering work not to put it on the plan personally, so... My pet peeve.
I didn't even skip it.
Oh, yes, so there are additional nonconforming... I mean, it's not conforming on...
No, it is conforming.
No, it's conforming on the rear. It's conforming on the side.
83.
It's nonconforming on the front, according to...
We don't know the lot width, and it's not conforming in area.
Lot width's 100. The front edge is 130. In the rear, it's 98, and it tapered, and it's a scalable... It's a scaled drawing, so we could scale it out.
I'm not scaling it out. It's not our job to scale out.
No, but I don't think that there's any... I can understand why the applicant wouldn't include it on the drawing because there's no... There's nothing to disclose that would...
It's nonconforming.
Challenge the decision of the board.
How do you know? It's not on there.
Maybe we can ask them to update it.
Yeah, I mean, if you could, just have them add the... And then just turn it in. To... Yeah, that'd take two seconds for him to do.
I'll get it taken.
Okay, that'd be great. All right, did we...
Second.
Okay, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Good luck.
Good luck. Thank you.
Thank you. It's a great little neighborhood, though.
Isn't it nice?
That whole area back there.
I really like the town. I haven't been up there much.
Well, hopefully you'll spend more time, so...
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Good luck. That may be mine. All right, and that would be it?
You want to draw me to?
Yes, at once. I will tell you. Oh, I didn't... I didn't read any minutes. I didn't think you were going to be here. You told us you weren't going to be here.
No, I said I wasn't going to be here till... Until the...
Oh, is that it?
But Sarah... She didn't read that either.
I didn't read the minutes either, so...
And you're going to approve them?
I'm sorry.
No, I already worked.
I know you did.
I know, so at least something about your one-up on it.
I had a busy month. What can I say?
Yeah, I know. Me, too.
So there's the revised minutes from November.
Oh, okay. Revised from November.
And December.
November, December.
And then you'll have... So we'll have three sets for the next one. Okay, I promise.
This is January. So you're going to get Januaries done that quick?
She always does.
She always does, that's right. All right.